Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular governing board meeting of the Jefferson Elementary School District, July 27, 2016, 7:00 PM. Could we have members present, please?
Shaquille Ali.
Here.
Nice timing, Ms. Ali.
Manu Falia Inga Anawai.
Here.
Marie Brizuela.
Here.
Clayton Koo.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here. Okay, and, um, oh, who shall I pick on? Mr. Vidalis, can you lead us in the pledge?
Sure, please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if we can just take a moment to review our board meeting guidelines. Okay. Be ready. Okay, so we have a motion for the approval of the agenda, but we have a request to table item 16A. That's closed session, item A, for a future meeting.
Closed session?
Yeah.
Just the A part?
Just the A part. So, otherwise, are the, all the others made it through in time?
Yes.
Okay, so if somebody can make a motion for a...
Make a motion. We approve the agenda with the decision of item number 16.
16A.
16A of the closed session. The conference will be...
Second?
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In the opposition. Great. Okay. Yes, we have communications persons wishing to address the board. Is this one for right now?
No.
That's for later. Okay, that's for later. Do we have any other speaker cards? Nope. Nobody wishes to address the board. Administrator comments?
So, we just wrapped up about a week ago, or two weeks ago, our summer programs, and we're gearing up for school starting August 17th. Our new teachers are returning August 8th, and they'll have trainings for a few days, and then we'll have an institute day for all certificated staff on August 12th. And then, um, school starts on Wednesday, the 17th, and I think we don't have a board meeting in between now and then, so I just wanted to update everyone on that. Schools, I believe school offices open August 8th for folks to enroll if they need to register at this point.
Yeah, well, like Ms. McCullicet said, busy ramping up for school to begin, and lots of hiring, and just want to say thanks to all the folks at the schools and that have helped out to make sure we can get that, you know, over the summer, who have taken that out of their time. And, uh, you know, we have a new substitute management system. We'll be training all the administrative assistants and attendance techs on that, and that's been kind of the big thing in the H R office lately.
Or remember acknowledgements and commendations?
Just want to acknowledge Assembly member Phil Ting. He had a town hall meeting at the San Francisco County Fair Building, and I did attend and asked him a couple pertinent questions from Mr. Vidalis on all of our behalf. But, um, uh, I was reassured that he has been pushing for, uh, to lift the cap on the reserve limit, but he's had, he has opposition, and we're gonna have to, um, just keep that issue on people's radar and to keep bringing awareness to it that we need to raise, you know, to lift that cap. And I believe Jerry Hill, uh, has a bill that, you know, he's trying to get passed, so we have to support both of them, Jerry Hill and Phil Ting.
Thank you.
I actually don't have a lot to say, which is very rare. I just want to say it feels good to be back after missing last meeting. Self-care has become very evident for me, um, but I'm really excited for the new school year. Um, I hope all of the staff and administrators and our teachers are enjoying and relaxing this summer so that they can come back rejuvenated and refreshed for another school year.
It seems like school is coming back much earlier, so I do have to mark my calendar, but I'm looking forward to the new year as well. And, um, and let's have you share with us what the new way of the substitute is doing.
Yeah, it's actually a pretty simple system.
We have a big agenda tonight, so maybe not time, but, um, it's always good to make things better, to work on that, so thank you for doing that. And other than that, I don't think I have much except that I do go to a wonderful event. Uh, it was, uh, the, what do we call it? It was, uh, your event.
Oh.
I wouldn't say the luau. It was a luau, but it's a, it's a...
It's our luau finale.
Yeah, but it was, uh, full of love and wonderful. People were there, and, you know, students were wonderful. You know, I haven't had that. I don't want anyone to hear me. Anyway, I was just saying, it was a wonderful event to see all the children there, the students, and they were dancing, they were loving it. And I was really watching everybody, and there was one little boy, and you could tell he was just a little bit kind of nervous, but he was doing it. And every now and then, he'd look over at his mother and he'd smile, and afterwards, I, he walked by and I said, "You were great." And he just lit up, you know. So they, it's nice because they're not all of the same culture, but they're learning it.
Yeah.
And how wonderful to share that. So, thank you for all the work that you do for that as well.
Thank you.
We enjoy it.
Um, I don't have much as well. Um, just want to wish everybody a good, great start to the new school year.
Well, I did want to say one thing. I forgot. I did call Bernie and tell him that I received in the mail a beautiful flyer. Compliment how wonderful, in all the years that I've been here, that's the first one I can, could not find anything wrong with it. Sorry, guys. I proofread a lot, you know, but it was, it was wonderful. It really got the message out, and it just, it was really good. And I had a lot of other folks saying they got that in the mail, so.
It's a great mail.
So I'm looking forward to that event as well.
Like others, I'm just slightly in shock that we're looking, talking about the end of the summer and the start of school. Looking at it in the face even closer, because the high school district actually starts classes on the 10th. So, yeah, something happened to August. It used to be summer vacation. But I do want to stress that the library's summer reading, summer learning program goes on through the end of August. The, uh, the parties are a little earlier than that, so to participate in that, you have to get your things in sooner, but you can keep getting prizes and entering the scholarship drawing until the 30th of August. Okay. Mr. Vidalis, any correspondence and comments?
Um, I just wanted to share, first of all, thanks to the board for, um, the light summer meeting schedule, one meeting in July, one meeting in August. It's really allowed, um, staff to be able to take, uh, much-needed vacations that the every-two-week board meetings don't always allow for. So, thank you for agreeing to that. Wish we'll do more. And, um, I wanted to share that I did have, in between being away, had an opportunity, uh, the week that I was back, to visit one of the big lift, um, summer learning programs' final closing ceremonies at both schools. And it was wonderful to see these entering kindergartners, entering first grades, graders so confident and comfortable in who they are as young learners and scholars. And, like, half of them were entering kindergarten, and these kids are gonna be ready for kindergarten. So they're gonna, they're gonna, their teachers are going to be in for a surprise when they see how energetic and excited and confident and willing they are to speak their mind. I mean, the kinds of qualities that we want in our young people, these students are already exemplifying. So I was very happy to see that and very grateful for the San Mateo County Office of Education and Silicon Valley Community Foundation and the U S Department of Education for sponsoring, um, this program and providing the funds so we can offer this kind of experience for 275 Jefferson Elementary School District students.
Thank you. Okay, section seven, general functions, the consent agenda. Could we have a motion to approve?
Move to, that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Can we read a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Ali.
Aye.
Ms. Lia Inga Anawai.
Aye.
Mrs. Brizuela.
Aye.
Mr. Koo.
Aye.
Dr. Douglas.
Aye. Thank you. And this brings us to item F, resolution number 1607-27B, calling for a November 8, 2016 election to approve an education and local control parcel tax. The administration recommends adoption of resolution number 1607-7B of the Board of Education of the Jefferson Elementary School District, calling for a November 8, 2016 election to approve an education and local control parcel tax. And...
I'll make that motion.
Um, I do have a speaker card on this item, so, um... Ms. McTessby Flynn?
Oh, sure.
On behalf of Ms. Melinda Dart.
This is really small print. And I do appreciate it's on the back of this. That's okay. I can do it. I can do it. I'll try it. Okay. So I'm reading this on behalf of Melinda Dart, who's at the convention. Dear Dr. Douglas, Ms. Brizuela, Ms. Lia Inga Anowai, Anno...
Aye.
Aye. I want to say it right. Anno Aye. Mr. Koo and Mr. Ali. Um, I am, I am unable to attend the J S D board meeting on July 27th because, because I'm at a Democratic National Convention. I am writing to urge you all to go forward with the plan to put a local funding measure on the ballot in November 2016. As you saw, the Jefferson High School measure passed overwhelmingly at over 70 percent. The only time to run this measure is in the national election when voter turnout is high. We will still have our work cut out for us to make our case in the community and to encourage everyone to vote to the end of their ballot. But I believe that our community supports our schools and will be ready to vote for schools in November. Since our future financial predictions are dire when we look at the budget, certainly our district needs to take action now to do all we can to bring in revenue that cannot be taken away and which can prevent loss of programs for our students. Sincerely, Melinda Dart, A F T President of 3267.
Thank you. And thank you, Melinda.
Should I read it twice? Thank you.
Thanks, Melinda.
Okay.
Do you want this back? Sure. Okay, and it looks like you have some information there.
Yes, I do. Um, so we've asked, um, Ms. Sarah Stern-Bernoua to be here today. She's from T B W B Strategies. I asked her to come and share with us some of the data that we learned from measure E in the high school district. So here's a chart. We'll have it displayed up.
Hi, everyone. It's good to see all of you again. Very exciting, um, to be considering placing another measure on the ballot to help fund your local schools. Just taking a look at, these are the measure E final results from the parcel tax election in June. And the support was actually the highest in your district within the Jefferson Elementary School District boundaries. As you can see, 75.9 percent supported that measure, so very, very strong support. Um, the other thing you do see, though, is that turnout was lowest in Jefferson Elementary School District, which isn't totally surprising, given the history of your community. There just tends to be a tougher time getting turnout, and we, we know that. So you can see that it's a little bit lower. That said, um, it was still pretty strong for a June presidential primary election. Forty-five point six percent is, is not as low as I've seen it. So it was actually, it's actually fairly encouraging in terms of turnout. Um, the other thing you're gonna see here, the numbers might look a little bit funny to you because it says votes cast 16,152, and you can add up the yes and no on the parcel tax, and that's less, about 1,300 votes less than the votes cast. And the reason for that is for what we call voter, or ballot drop-off. So people cast votes in the election, but they didn't actually cast a vote on measure E. So maybe they only voted for their primary, presidential primary pick in this protection, in this particular election. And the reason I want to mention that is because we're gonna have a similar situation in November. So Melinda's comment, I thought, was actually quite astute. We're gonna have a really long ballot, um, and really the trick is gonna be for a volunteer campaign committee to make sure that people get all the way to the last page of the ballot and vote for this measure. So that's just one thing to keep in mind. Um, but we did see very strong poll results when you did a voter survey, um, for this measure, which really, um, gave us a strong green light to go forward, and we think that you can, um, we think you can be successful.
Thank you. People have any questions about this?
So the resolution is the same as you saw in June. Now, there were no changes made. And essentially, it will bring, um, an opportunity for our district to generate some local, local funding, as you know. The flyer that Mrs. Brizuela referenced, and also an article in the San Mateo Mercury early in June, identified Jefferson Elementary as being the third lowest-funded public elementary school district in San Mateo County, with many districts getting twice as much per student and some districts close to three times as much. So, um, a local, a local measure is desperately needed if, if we want to provide our students with opportunities and experiences that their peers will have as they move on into high school.
Well, we gotta plug kind of, at the city council meeting Monday night, when they refer to our, our being on the ballot.
Slightly premature, but...
Uh, yeah, but...
Interesting.
That's okay. It's, I'm glad it was mentioned.
Anybody else have any questions or comments before we call for a vote?
No.
Uh, just a comment that, um, you know, a well-funded and innovative, uh, public school system is what we need to tackle the challenges of the future, and our district is definitely innovative, and now we need more funds. So I think this is important for us to support.
And I think that we'll get many volunteers to help us. So it'll, it'll work.
Who would like to...
So, with that said, I'd like to motion that we pass resolution number 16-07-27B, calling for a November 8, 2016 election to approve an education and local control parcel tax.
Second the motion. Will you all second it?
That's, I don't know. I was jumping the gun. Um, so that is a resolution, so we do need a roll call vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Ali.
Aye.
Ms. Lia Inga Anawai.
Aye.
Mrs. Brizuela.
Yes.
Mr. Koo.
Aye.
Dr. Douglas.
Aye. That is unanimous. The other thing I see now we have cut out before us is to make sure that the voters in our district understand that we are not the Jefferson School District that they just voted on a parcel tax for. That's the other largest part of our job.
My, my message, and should be everybody's message, is in order for the students to make it to the high school, we have to be able to give them the best.
No, I think people know that. The problem is that they don't, many of them, who I would think know better, don't know that there are two districts with the name Jefferson.
That's what we have to always say, elementary.
Yes, yes, to, to make sure that people know. This is not the same group. We're different, and we still, we need the money too.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, item G, SB 415, moving board trustee elections to even-numbered years. This is an information item. Catherine Miola, Chief Deputy County Counsel, will present on SB 415 and its implications for districts like Jefferson Elementary that currently hold trustee elections in odd-numbered years.
Hello. Good evening, trustees.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Aye.
Yes, I'm Catherine Miola. I'm a chief deputy in the San Mateo County Council's office. I lead our school team and our special ed team, and I've been practicing, uh, in school law for more than 10 years now, and I've been an attorney with the county for about 22, so. I come to you, as I've come to several other boards throughout the county regarding trustee elections, where you are elected for the, during the odd-numbered years. There was a bill that was passed, SB 415, which requires the school district to develop a plan by 2018 to change your elections to even-numbered-year elections by 2022 if you have a significant decrease in the voter turnout between the odd-numbered-year elections and the even-numbered-year elections. It's our, I haven't done the study for this particular district, but it is our understanding that if you were to undertake such a study, all districts within this county have a significant decrease between the voter turnout of the odd-numbered years to the even-numbered years. So if you were going to do the study, most likely you would have to develop a plan. You would fall within SB 415 and develop a plan by 2018 to change your elections. There is also a procedure to voluntarily change your elections, which was already in the law prior to SB 415 being passed. That procedure allows for you to extend your terms by one year to then coincide with even-numbered-years elections. And, um, if you were to do, some of my districts across the county are choosing to voluntarily change their, um, elections to even-numbered years through that procedure, and I have that outlined, um, in a memo that I believe was presented. So I am here to answer any questions you might have. It's, it's interesting. There's been a, a sort of a different, differing opinion across the county as to, um, the reactions to SB 415, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
If you wouldn't mind, Ms. Miola, if you wouldn't just sort of outline what the process would be like? I understand there's noticing requirements, and, and those types of requirements should the board, um, decide to extend by one year of their terms.
Uh, first, the governing board has to adopt a resolution, and I've already created a draft resolution for, um, for you to consider. Okay, great. Sometimes the materials get, sometimes they don't. But anyway, you adopt a draft, adopt a resolution, and there are two different ways. I, I mean, there are two different ways to comply with SB 415. One might be to shorten board member elections, I mean, not terms, to three years, or do a voluntary resignation. But the most, the more common way, because this was already in the law, and it's probably the less risky way, is to extend the board member terms by one year. And so the way you do that is that you adopt a resolution. You then submit that to the county board of supervisors. And again, this was the process before SB 415 was, was passed, okay? The, uh, board of supervisors then has to, uh, approve your resolution, and they have the ability not to approve the resolution if the elections department says, you know, "We just can't do this," or "Our equipment isn't, uh, designed to handle the number of elections we're going to have." That, again, was before SB 415 was passed. So now that SB 415 has been passed, and you are required, if you have a significant decrease in voter turnout, to change your elections. Uh, you know, I find it hard to believe that the board of supervisors would not adopt, you know, or pass or approve your resolution. However, that is what happens, and then after that, the board of supervisors directs the elections department to then send out notices to all of your affected voters, um, that this change is happening. Um, and, um, there's a cost to that that is then charged back to the school district. And, um, I did find out from the elections department approximately, yes, I know, how much that would be. Uh, there's different ways of noticing your elected, affected voters. Uh, a postcard is approximately 60 cents per affected voter, and then a, a letter is the other way. It's a dollar, approximately a dollar. So that's pretty much how much it would cost, uh, the school district to, um, to go through this process, which, again, is required if there's a significant decrease in voter turnout.
So that... Yeah, the other question is, in terms of timing, so if the board should elect to do this soon, would this extension of term be applicable to those board members whose offices would be up for election in 2017? Or would it need to be applied for the ones, um, whose offices are up for election in 2019?
So for 2017, you would have to submit the resolution before March, approximately March 22nd of 2017. Um, I would suggest you do it earlier than that, at least by January, something to that effect. And typically, what my other boards are doing is if you are going to move to extend your election, you can actually do it, um, through one resolution, and you just set the board member terms, uh, by extending one year. But again, staggered. So again, the two that would be up in 2017 would go to 18, and then the three would go to 20, 2020. Does that make sense? But all in one resolution.
Either way around. That's okay.
Or, or, yes, sorry. Um, all in one resolution, though, as opposed to do it two different ways. Uh, but again, you would have to present that to the board supervisors by March of 2017.
Was this, was SB 415, um, was that the result of a lawsuit, or what, what happened?
So my understanding, and I don't have, uh, personal knowledge of this, but my understanding is that it was, um, a senator in Southern California, and the, the idea is that because you have a much smaller voter turnout, that the elected officials may not be reflective of the larger community. Um, and, and so if you have a significant decrease between the two election years, having a larger voter turnout presumably will give you a, um, more reflective electorate, elected official. So, um, so that's the, that's the idea. That's the thinking. I, I don't know if that's true or not. Some other board members have expressed frustration about the fact that it would be, it's gonna be harder to get your message across because it's gonna be, uh, there's gonna be more elections going on during the even-numbered years, and the ballot itself will be much longer. But, um, that's why before SB 415, um, the elections department could provide notice or information to the board of supervisors, saying, you know, "Please don't do this," or "This would be really difficult for us to do." But again, given that this has passed, and you do most likely have a decrease in voter turnout, you are gonna have to, to move to even-yeared elections, so.
Some years back, this happened also, and I don't know what actually prompted it, and we had a choice. And so you can see throughout the county, it's kind of half and half.
Correct.
So some of us believed that we liked it on the off-years, um, yeah, the odd-numbered years, because people paid more attention to what was on the ballot, 'cause there wasn't that much on the ballot. But now it looks like we don't have a choice.
Well, you haven't done the study again, but if you, my understanding is that if you did do the study, you would find yes. And so then, yes, I would suggest it's probably true. You don't have a choice. Uh, yes, there are 14, uh, districts that, um, are on odd-yeared elections, uh, in this county. So yes, it's about half, exactly.
Just, um, I've been spending a lot of my vacation hanging out with the math geeks of my life, so I just ran some numbers here. Uh, based on my memory of how many people voted the last time I was elected... Based on my memory of how many people voted the last time I was elected, it was about eighteen percent of the elector, or about eighteen percent of the number who voted last June. So I'd say it's probably a no-brainer that we don't come anywhere near meeting that number. I just figured it out from the wrong one. I also did the math. If it's a sixty-cent mailer to the number of registered voters that Sarah just gave us, that's about $21,300 that we would be on for, about.
So another question is, is it cheaper for us to be in the even-numbered elections?
Yes.
So that, we'd make up for that loss.
There'd be some offset even over the, over time, it would be more than...
That's correct.
Because it's more, more elections at that cost of the election.
Yeah, and an off-year election, odd-numbered-year election, an election costs us about $50,000, a traditional election. The mail-in ballot election that we had in twenty, was it 2015? It seems like yesterday that we had in 2015. That one ended up costing just under $30,000. So when you share an election with more agencies, the election cost is spread among the agencies. So it should end up costing us far less than $50,000. So in which case, we would make back whatever funds we put into the notification process.
So I had a question about the plan that you're saying that the board has to develop. If we do the resolution, does that meet that requirement, or is it in addition to the resolution?
So if you do the resolution and submit it in time before 2018, you'll be on, and assuming it gets passed, you'll be on even-yeared elections. So then you would not fall within the requirements of SB 415. You would effectively voluntarily take yourself out of that, and so you would not have to then pass a plan. But if you wait and you're doing it in between, you would have to pass a plan, and it's something that I can draft and send to Bernie. That's not a problem. So don't feel like you have to voluntarily do this now. You will have to do it at some point, most likely, but you don't necessarily have to do it now. A lot of my boards are, though, doing it now. They're finding it just easier to go through the voluntary process of extending terms.
So the reason this is on the agenda as an information slash discussion is because I needed to hear your conversation on this and try to get some direction about how to move forward, whether or not we have, Ms. Miola, draft a resolution sooner rather than later. My personal preference is that we do take care of this sooner, partially because it's on the front burner right now. If we move it to the back, I'm afraid we may end up in 2020 and not have a plan. So never have addressed it, although I'm sure County Council will remind, would remind us to tell us. You need to have something in place. But anyway, I think you're all, you know, the whole board is here, you've all heard the information. And anyway, if you wouldn't mind having a discussion out loud so that I could, so that I can gauge direction, that would be great.
Anybody want to kick off that discussion?
I think if we're going to have to do it, then we ought to do it, like Bernie said, get it done.
That's basically my, my take on it. And like I said, I mean, it doesn't, we don't need to spend money on a study to know that we would be required to do it. Be proactive. It sounds like it's simpler to take care of it before we get into the requirements of AB 415, SB 415.
And even though that, you know, previous boards, we all thought that it's better to have it on the off-year. Tell you the truth, if people are interested in education, they're going to go to the bottom of the ballot.
Yeah.
That's, it depends on how we get the message out. So if it's mandatory, going to be mandatory, let's get it done so we don't worry about it. Just move on.
I agree. I'd like to move forward to, you've had the resolution already, so...
Yeah, that's a draft with no names, but I could work with Ms. Miola to fill in the blanks.
We can fill in the blanks with...
And then have the board consider it at one of its next two meetings. I mean, I think I'd like to get this in as soon as possible so that the proper notification gets done and our voters are aware of what's happening.
So we want to get this done so we can work on something else, right?
Exactly. Well, there's always something else.
I have a quick question. So if we, if we as a board go ahead and want to move forward with a resolution to extend a term or not extend it or whatever, what is the timeline in terms of how long ahead of time do voters need to be told about this change? And what's like steps in terms of that?
So the final resolution has to be submitted to the elections department before March, or March 22nd, around there. I have the date for 2016, so it would be around March 22nd in 2017, if that's a business day. If it's not, then you'd back it up to the next preceding business day. The notification, the board, it has to go to the board of supervisors before then and approved. And then the notification to the voters goes out as well. So that's why I'm saying that in order for your election to actually be changed in 2017, it has, that all has to be done prior to March of 2017. So again, I think that if you get it out to the board of supervisors this fall, you know, or soon, then they can get it on their meeting agenda, and then the affected voters would be notified. That would all be plenty of time. I think we're pushing it. If we wait until January, I still think that's probably enough time. But I'd have, I'd probably be making some phone calls to make sure it gets done for you if we wait that long, that's all.
Yeah. So the notification to the voters goes out in the months just before when there would have been an election, which, I mean, to be perfectly honest, I think most people probably know that there's a school board election when our signs go up, and otherwise, there isn't going to be a whole lot of question about that. So, yeah.
I have had, I'm sorry, I have had other boards be concerned about the length of time. Of course, it's just extending it for one year for one time, and then you go back to the four years after that. But it also doesn't, just because you extend it, doesn't mean that if a board member wanted to resign early, they could still. Like, all that process still remains the same. It's just aligning the election term itself to even-numbered years.
So, it's just saying what you said about that. Okay, let's just say somebody had to, had to leave. Does that mean we have to have a special election?
Yeah, there's a, there's two different ways to go. You can do an appointment process, or you can do a special election. And then if you don't do anything within, I think it's sixty days of the resignation, then you, the county superintendent has to call for an election.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So we...
And a special election is much more expensive.
Yeah, we don't want to do that again.
Yes, it's much more expensive, yes.
So we defeat the purpose.
So given, given that level of conversation, I will work with Ms. Miola to get a resolution customized to us and to our terms and all of the number of seats in each election cycle. The other thing is that other districts are doing this as well. So it's happening throughout the county, so it's not like, oh, just this district wants to extend their terms by one year. It's like, there's a number of districts in order to comply with SB 415 that are needing to do this. So I will have that ready at one of our future meetings this fall, so we can get in well before January, hopefully by November.
For the holidays.
Millbury already has done, has passed the resolution to extend the board terms. San Mateo Union is planning to extend the board terms. I believe they're doing it this summer, if they haven't already done it. And then San Mateo Foster City had me come speak to them, but I don't know exactly what they're doing yet, so.
So we'll be in good company.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Miola.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item H, CSEA Chapter 233 and the Jefferson Elementary School District Tentative Agreement for the 2016-17 school year and salary increase and health benefits contribution for unrepresented confidential classified employees, classified management, and psychologists.
So items H through K, H, I, J, and K, and they're all very similar. If you wanted to do one motion to pass as stated, we can do it that way, or we can do one item at a time, so.
All the same.
They're...
They're slightly different, but if you just, if the motion is a motion to approve the items as stated in the agenda, that would be appropriate.
These are, yeah, these are slightly different salary increases for the CSEA, the unrepresented, unrepresented certificated management personnel commissioner. I might just want to say, let's separate out J and K for the personnel commission and the governing board. But we could certainly do H and I together. I being the salary increase in health benefits contribution for unrepresented certificated management assistant superintendent and superintendent. Do you all want me to read the whole description of each of those into the record?
I think it's just relevant to just say principals, vice principals, directors, and then what is the other one?
Management.
The other one is CSEA, all of the classified, and also the unrepresented classified.
Nothing else good enough.
Okay, so remember, again, we're doing number H.
H and I.
I. And...
And then I'd like to do J and K separately, because they are actually a little different.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve item H, CSEA, as noted, and I?
Second.
You have a second. And all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. The only reason I did them separately is that, you know, J is personnel commissioners, health benefits contribution. This does match the health contribution of the other people, but it's only a health benefit contribution, not a salary increase. That's to be of the same tiered ongoing cap for health benefits for the 2016-17 school year, as in the AFT and CSEA tentative agreements, effective July 1st, 2016. And that is actually, well, it's listed here as for governing board members and personnel commissioners. K is actually the governing board member version. So let's do J.
I'd say, I'll make a motion to approve item J concerning personnel commissioners, commissioners' health benefit contributions.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And K, the governing board stipend increase and health benefits contribution. Governing board will consider adjusting the governing board's monthly stipend to an annual increase of 3.13%, matching other increases. That is from $252 to $260 a month, an increase of $8 per month, effective July 1st, 2016, and to continue in the same tiered ongoing cap for health benefits, et cetera, as with the AFT and CSEA tentative agreements.
So we can get an extra coffee a week.
I don't know.
Two, you don't have to buy the expensive one.
The coffee's going up, never mind.
I wanted to make it clear that we are voting ourselves a pay increase. It's not exactly going to make us all rich. Okay, so we need a motion for that one as well.
He's embarrassed to make the motion.
Nobody else is going to do it.
Go ahead, do it.
Okay, I will make the motion that we approve item K, governing board stipend increase and health benefits contribution as presented.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, coffee. Okay.
I just wanted a clarification. So the ed code does actually have a limit on how much the boards can give themselves, and it's five percent a year. The board, we've just typically started doing whatever increase is given to other employee groups because the board had not done anything for the longest time.
So haven't.
Yeah, since, since the ed code was written, yeah. And so we've just begun, you know, just making it equal. Though you're allowed to give yourselves up to five percent, we just do whatever. And caps it at five percent if employee groups go above five percent, as we have the last couple of years.
It's good to know.
Yes, we went, we started doing it, what, two years ago? We started giving ourselves, three years ago?
Three or four years.
And I think at that point realized that it hadn't been increased since 1980 something.
No, 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 never.
Never, okay.
Never.
That was the original...
It was the baseline. You were at, you were at the baseline.
We were told that this is, this is how much you're getting, that's it. But then, as I talked to other school districts, they keep getting something, so. Not that it matters, because it's certainly, I mean, eight dollars is nothing, so. And we do it, we don't think we do it for the pay.
We do it for the kids, not the pay, but yeah. Okay, item M, Fuller Strategic Advisors Community Engagement Update. We have a representative from Fuller Strategic to provide an update on our public relations, community engagement, social media, and other support activities, as described in our district bill.
Yeah, I'll be okay, okay. Sure, that's fine. The hiccup is, I apologize. My team prepares me with PowerPoint, but I don't really flow well with PowerPoint. So that's the hiccup. First of all, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Rolando Bonilla. I am the chief strategy officer for Fuller Strategic Advisors. I'm happy to be here this evening, first of all, because it's 100 degrees in San Jose, so I'm happy to be back in the fog, back in my hometown. So thank you for that opportunity. So we represent the district in matters of really what we call parent-community engagement. When we first began this relationship with the district, the superintendent and his cabinet, as well as many of you at the board level, recognized that there was critically, it was a critical need in terms of how we communicate inward and outward. Inward being how we talk to our parents, how we talk to members, you know, teachers, classified staff, how we talk to stakeholders. And then outward in terms of folks who may not necessarily have children within the district, but who definitely should have a vested interest and understanding of what's happening within the district. So one of the first things that we did, and Sandy, feel free to run your way, because we could just skip forward one more slide. It's a little bit of an overview of the company, but I want to really, you know, use this time to answer a lot of questions. So what we do particularly in the education space, Jefferson specifically, is we have come in and worked with your cabinet in terms of identifying how we can develop a communications infrastructure. How are we able to not only disseminate messages, but how do we get messages? How do we have that back and forth? Over the time that we've been here, working directly with Sandy, with Tony, and the rest of the team, we've been able to implement trainings at the principal level, recognizing that the principals are essentially your brand ambassadors. As cool as we think we are at the administrative, elected levels, the fundamental truth is your principals are the face of this district. So recognizing that, we've undertaken a series of trainings that we're going, are really more of a perpetual thing that we want to kind of do consistently, to give principals the tools they need to have that robust conversation with their parent community and to answer questions when asked by parent community. I know the theme tonight feels like it's been about messaging, right? Well, the messaging begins at that granular level in terms of having the confidence of knowing that the principal has all of the information that he or she needs to really communicate to that parent or to, and to the neighbors around that parent, what is happening, not only at the school level, but also at the district level. Where are we today? Where are we going tomorrow? Why is this important? Why is this happening? It could be as simple as, why is, why are the parking routes being changed? Or as complicated as, why are these, you know, major policies being implemented at the district level? Not having those answers, very similar to the hotel industry, for example, not having those answers could be enough oftentimes to create a disconnect between the very folks you serve and the district and the school. So for us, it's been very critical to spend a lot of time on the ground, really working on those trainings, really making sure that our principals have the tools that they need in order to be well-equipped, to really be the best brand ambassadors they can be. You know, in the communication space, oftentimes we're measured by, you know, press. Everyone says, you know, we've got a lot of good things happening here, you know, can you get us on television? Can you get us on radio? Can you get us on print? And the truth has been that here at Jefferson, we've had a lot of great success. I don't know if any of you recall, recently, we had done a partnership with NBC and Telemundo where we were doing live two-hour programs on the number-one rated news station in the Bay Area. Now, we were able, initially, on a pitch, were able to work with them and convince them that this was a good opportunity in terms of, you know, value proposition from a community point of view, and that the viewership would actually embrace what they were seeing on television. Well, luckily for the district, and not so luckily for those of us that had to wake up at three in the morning to prep it, they actually decided to come back because they had so much success in terms of what we had presented as a district. And the opportunity for us is that we went from Wilson to, I believe it was Anthony and a couple of other schools as well. And the opportunity for us is that we went from Wilson to, I believe it was Anthony, and a couple of other schools as well. So that's, that has become a big part of what we try to do consistently in terms of, again, conveying that message, demonstrating to the community here, and not only in Daly City, but the region, that there are a lot of good things happening here and that this is a district that folks should feel very confident supporting in terms of just day-to-day and really being a good neighbor and vice versa. You know, social media is another platform, I understand, Trustee, who you've got some background in this space, I don't know if you recall, but in the very beginning when we came on board, there really wasn't any social media infrastructure. Well, what we have found here is that not only is there a social media infrastructure, well, let me take that back. Not only, now there's a social media infrastructure, there was a critical thirst, a huge thirst for this information. What we have found has been that Facebook has been a very popular platform by which folks within the community are sharing information. Trustee Douglas, I have seen you like photos of teachers, I've seen the superintendent also do the same. And what we have found in this community, and Trustee, who you're well aware of this, you know, oftentimes in the social media space, there's this concept called boosting. Boosting is essentially paid advertising. It isn't necessarily a strategy, right? I don't want to ever come into a study like this and say, we're going to boost, we're going to make you fit, no, that's just not the way it works. What you're looking for is organic, meaning there's enough local support that it kind of has that ability to generate a life of its own. That has been the case here in the Jefferson Elementary School District community. You know, can we do a better job? Absolutely, and we're definitely moving in a direction of kind of taking it to that next tier in terms of increasing involvement and adding other platforms that we think would be a good match for this community because of the response that we've gotten on Facebook. So these are some of the things that we do on a day-to-day, right? It's a big picture, it's press, big picture, it's messaging, you know, letters to community, letters to stakeholders. There is that crisis communications element that where we do represent the district in the event of, for example, media calls, we're always the first call from the superintendent's office in terms of developing the strategy, developing how we're going to take that next step in terms of engaging with media when they're calling, whether it's, you know, for something that may not seem as if it's going in a positive direction or whether it is positive. So, you know, in a nutshell, that is what we've been working on. You know, I think I do tip my hat to you all for recognizing the trend. The reality is nowadays, you know, school districts up and down California, not just school districts, but public entities as a whole, are finally embracing the fact that because of this social media culture, there is a need to transfer information as soon as possible. People are no longer willing to wait, and candidly, they shouldn't have to. And I think, you know, recognizing this need, you all were, had enough vision to recognize that someone needed to come on board to help with that, and we are very fortunate and appreciative of having that opportunity. But without a doubt, there's still a lot of work to get done, but within this amount of time, we could definitely have a lot of wins that we can point to in terms of the creation of an infrastructure within this district that will allow you to have a better opportunity to convey your message to stakeholders, to parents, on a much more consistent basis, candidly, when we need to, when we want to as well. So with that, you know, again, very 30,000 feet, I'd love the opportunity to answer your questions and really, really give you the chance to dig in a little bit. And Sandy, thank you so much for dealing with my inability to want to play with PowerPoint. I've been in government for 20 years, as you know, I've been in government for 20 years. I've never used PowerPoint, really, that's just never been my thing, so I can't really get rid of that habit anymore.
I think you're to be congratulated on that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So with that, I'd love to answer questions if you have any.
I had a question, I just wasn't sure about the, you know, the school websites, is that something they're handling? Rolando, is that something we're doing internally?
Sure, so websites tend to be, you know, something from a development aspect that is handled by folks who do that every day. Where we come in is we handle a lot of the content, the actual language that goes on on those websites. So if the district feels that it's a priority to redo the websites for the district, we would absolutely be called in to develop a lot of that language content. The reason being, one, we've got writers on staff, two, because we've been working and developing the narrative and the language, we want to be able to maintain that consistency. You don't want message A going out, and then when you go to your interface, your user interface, the website, it's got message B or C, and there's no consistency, right? These are all tools, press, social media, websites, newsletters, and by the way, newsletters are on the way out, no offense to anyone that uses them, but Facebook is that new newsletter. Those are tools. At the core of all of this, we're talking about the development of a master message and the cultivation of a master message that is always evolving because it has to make those adjustments based on the needs at that moment. But to answer your question, this is a long-winded way of saying, we would handle and work directly with the district and whoever you hire as a provider of the development of that website to develop the copy, for sure.
I can also answer that. Each school site controls their own website, the district tech department oversees all of the website, but every department has access to editing their own content. But it's actually in our LCAP to investigate an upgraded interface. And so we're actually looking into it right now and have some options, and so hopefully by next year, we'll have a new interface that will be more user-friendly and more consistent.
Thank you, because I agree, consistent messaging and aligning it in some way, but still keeping them unique, that's what sticks. And I think what people look for too in the individual school websites is taking ownership. I mean, the Facebook page is great, I love it, I love it too, but I know as a parent, you always take great pride in your own school, so you're like, well, what's going on in my school?
Right.
You know, so they kind of like to own that, and I'm just wanting to see some alignment, so I wasn't, I just wasn't sure where that, where you were involved with that.
The other thing is that through the leadership that Valer has been providing, many schools have also started their own Facebook pages to get out that quick message that they need to get out, or the wonderful news of something that happened on that day. And it's, Facebook is so much easier to use than our website program, so, and it's easier, easy to manage. So many schools, I would say about half, at least half of our schools do have a Facebook presence.
And I would say, to add to your earlier question, into the superintendent's position, we're at a point now where your principals, thanks to the opportunities you've all given us to speak to them, are now at a point where they will contact us directly in terms of events that are happening or items they want to publicize, or, you know, hey, we think this is newsworthy, can you, can you help us? And our team does spend time on the ground. From a content gathering point of view, we've sent staff, members of our team to all of your sites multiple times. It's very much an ongoing thing, we're very on the ground, so that gives us, again, the opportunity to have the conversation we need to have with the broader audience.
I don't have any questions, I just want to say thanks for the great work that you've been doing, and, you know, communication is the first line of defense. So, but actually, I do have a question.
Sure.
Earlier, you mentioned something about press not being everything. Is it actually a good thing to not be in the press too often as a district, or what is your idea about that?
I would say the way we come about it, and this is also, this is not just my philosophy, working with public agencies, school districts throughout the state, is that if you've got something good to talk about, let's talk about it. Sometimes it'll fit within the paradigm of, let's have that conversation via the press. Sometimes it'll be a social media conversation or an email blast story. The reality is this, as a school district, you know, as an entity, you're very much a public official, right? So on those slow days where you've got to write about something, as we've seen here on multiple occasions, sometimes that something is something that the district would not necessarily consider a positive. So when you're not having a consistent conversation via the press, via your channels, the principals, via social media, then those instances become magnified, and they become the narrative that defines you, whether fairly or unfairly. So what we're saying is there's recognition that there's just so much positive happening, why not have that conversation on a consistent basis? So my honest answer, and this is not just because I'm a communications guy from my former political days, is really, more is better when you have something to talk about. But just naturally through the process, you'll find that maybe one out of eight items is a newsworthy item anyway. And in many ways, the natural order of things allows for you not to saturate. But we wouldn't be doing something weekly, or bi-weekly, within reason. And if you do follow the intake of content coming through us, you'll find that about, like I said, one out of eight items is like, whoa, we need to, we need to do something with this. So it'll naturally handle itself.
All right, so just one quick follow-up to what Miss Anai was talking about. I just don't want us to forget that with, even with the individual messages that the schools want to put out, that those schools, and you did mention that they should have access to those, something that you think is worthy for all the websites or all the Facebooks to have this particular video on there. So I just want to, you know, make sure we don't forget about that.
One of the things that you'll be happy to hear, your cabinet team here and superintendent have driven home with me, has been this notion of, particularly during the trainings, but definitely when I'm having the external conversation, that we're all kind of one district, and as proud as you are of your school site, as you should be, that school is a part of a bigger family.
Right.
And that's really been the narrative that we've really worked on pushing out. This last six, seven months has really been more of an in-reach training, but as we begin the new year and we begin kicking out hard again, you're going to see that message come out a lot more consistently. Be proud of your school, but your school is a part of this district. We're in this together. Maybe that's top of mind because of the Democratic Convention, but nevertheless, that is the message that I've been tasked to drive home.
Great, all right, yeah, this all is exciting to me.
Cool, thank you.
One of the wonderful things that Valer brings, you know, many districts do have their own public information officers. Larger districts definitely do, even mid-sized like us do as well. But what the mid-sized and the small districts do is promote folks who are educators into that position. And we don't have the expertise, and we may know how to use the tools, but we don't know the wider scope of communication, and we don't have the contacts. So what Valer has done is that they've brought their expertise to share with us, they support many other school districts in the Bay Area and other public agencies, and so we're fortunate that they have the expertise they have and that we're able to tap into that, and they can provide us the support that we need, especially in getting our positive message out and also in handling some of the more sensitive topics that come up and come our way.
Yes, one of the things we're proud of is everyone within our organization has served in public service and nonprofits. So because of that, we tend to have an understanding, I mean, I've been on that side of the dais, so I know what thought process you have to undertake, as have most of the members on my team. So I think that angle of community service and public service, government, also helps us in terms of better serving you.
Well, I want to say thank you, Rolando and I go way back, we're Willie Brown's kids. From being a youth commissioner, continuing your public service, and I think it's wonderful that you're able to serve us in this capacity. So glad to see that you're still at it, thank you.
You can't stop.
I was going to say thanks for the presentation, and I just want to say, I love your social media stuff on Facebook and Twitter, I see it every morning, and
Thank you.
I enjoy like just seeing different stuff from different schools, because I feel like most of us don't get to go to every school all the time, but it's nice to know and hear about what's going on across all the schools, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
I was wondering what, in terms of social media and as a way to kind of brand the school district, are you guys looking into other forms of social media, like platforms like Instagram or? Because I know right now, a huge thing on Facebook and like Twitter and Periscope is kind of a live feed stuff. So I know that like recently we had a lot of graduations or back-to-school stuff. Is there a way to like kind of incorporate some of those live aspects as a way to kind of engage parents or people who can't go to some of the school events, but want to see those memories and kind of enjoy some of those kind of moments in schools?
The answer is yes and yes. As far as, for example, the additional platforms I had mentioned earlier, Instagram was the platform I had mentioned to the superintendent. As far as, for example, Periscope or Facebook Live, we are looking into how to do that. The only concern we're trying to mitigate, so essentially what we're trying to develop is more of a policy, right? Is once you do it once, that every event, so what is the drawing line? You know, how do we kind of share in the distribution of that? Those are, things are being sorted, but they're definitely being looked at. I would say it's much more likely that we get an Instagram account on sooner because that's already being somewhat vetted out from what we've learned with Facebook and Twitter, so yes and yes.
I'm ready to follow you guys on Instagram and like your pictures, so.
Thank you.
Let me know when it's ready.
So yeah, so the live feed does present interesting things, because not all of our students have media release forms. And so as a district-sponsored platform, if we were going to do live feed, we sort of would have to choose the population of students that would be represented and make sure that those who don't have release forms are excluded. The still photos are easier because we can look at them and make sure that everyone is appropriately permissioned, so.
Exactly, that's part of the issue we have to deal with.
I have no further questions, did you have any?
No, I have no idea what anyone's talking about. All I know is I pick up the phone and talk to people. I have no idea what this is.
We may have a special assignment for you to help Ms. Brizwella get on Facebook.
Somebody asked me to be a friend on Facebook, and I can't stand it, I just turn it off. I don't want to see what someone's cat is doing. But I will try to look into it, because I didn't know our kids, our school was that far into this.
Trust me, at this point in the election cycle, the cats are the best.
Election cycle, what?
Orange cats are the best.
Just as opposed to all the political posts, I'd rather watch people's cats.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and appreciate the work and the presentation.
Thank you, and if you have any questions, I'm easy to get ahold of, and it has my contact information, and it's in the PowerPoint I did not use. Good evening, thank you.
Which will be attached to the minutes once.
Thank you.
We have, yeah, thanks. Okay, this brings us to item N, Resolution Number 160727C, Workers' Compensation Insurance Coverage for Volunteers. The administration recommends adoption of this resolution for workers' compensation insurance coverage for volunteers for the JESD. This is a requirement of participation in San Mateo County Schools Insurance Group.
I'd like to make a motion unless there's going to be discussion.
I'll second that.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 16-07-27C for workers' compensation, compensation insurance coverage for volunteers.
I'll second that.
Okay, we need a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ali.
Aye.
Ms. Leah Inga Anawahi.
Aye.
Mrs. Brizwella.
Aye.
Mr. Ku.
Aye.
Dr. Douglas.
Aye. Okay, thank you. And item O, 2016 CSBA Legislative Awards Program. Information, the administration recommends that the board consider nominating a member of the state legislature or Congress for one of CSBA's 2016 legislative awards. Nominations are due to the board president or superintendent by August 15, 2016, for consideration at the August 24th board meeting. And this is just for our information, if anybody has somebody you want to nominate, the forms and so forth are attached to this item, and you can fill them out and turn them in. And then we argue about it at the next meeting. Okay. This takes a jump all the way to item, Section 9, Business and Financial Procedures, Item J, Closeout of Phase 2A of TR Polisita Middle School Project.
Let me just speak to those four items altogether, J, K, L, and M. All of this is related to Polisita Phase 2A. J is the item that withdraws our termination for convenience, this is a procedural item. We issued a termination for convenience back in January, so they can stop work. And so now, as we're getting ready to close out, we need to withdraw that. K is a series of change orders, some of them for more work that we asked block construction to take on. Another one are for some unanticipated issues that came up in the construction. And another one, the third one, I think, is for work that was not done because it was determined it's better to do that work later in the project than at the time we originally scheduled it. So all of this is, are sort of procedural and accounting tasks that have to be done. The board did approve. and accounting tasks that have to be done. The board did approve a final price for the project, approved contingencies, approved allowances. And so this is, all of those costs that exceeded contingencies and allowances need to be approved through a change order process. And then L and M. Block did, did complete some work that, that was defective in the Phase Two A, so they corrected it and is now complete. So K would be accepting the Phase Two A as complete now. Yeah, L would be accepting it as complete. And then M would be approving the final payment. K and M, if we had known that it was complete, we probably would have combined it together. But at the time of putting the agenda out, the work had not yet been completed. It was in process. And so we separated it out, so that we have the final payment and the partial payment approved by the board.
So are we all within what's necessary to complete it? Yay.
So do we need to go through each one individually, or can we approve these as a set?
I think you can approve items J, K, L, and M as stated in, in the.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve J, K, L, and M as stated in the agenda.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great. Thank you.
I did have a slight question, though, about the defective work that they redid. Did they do that for free? I mean, how does?
Yeah, so we had a contract with Block to complete the work as stated. It was an electrical duct that was misplaced. So they came back and they took care of it for, you know, as part of their contract with us. And, and that's what that final payment of seventy-five thousand dollars was, in case, and we needed to take care of that on our own, then we would have the funds to do that. But they did it, so we can give them that money.
All right. Okay. Section ten, Certificated Personnel. Item A, Certificated Retirements. We have retirement requests, and recommend approval and the appropriate resolutions prepared for Kathleen Hagerhorst, second grade teacher at Westlake Elementary, effective June ten, twenty sixteen. She has been employed by the district since September two, nineteen eighty-six. And Dorothy T. Louis, second grade at Garden Village, and she has been employed by the district since August thirtieth, nineteen ninety-one. So we can have a motion.
Make a motion that we accept the retirements of Kathleen Hagerhorst and Dorothy Louis, and that appropriate resolutions be presented, commending them for their employment.
And a second from, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And may they enjoy retirement.
Kathleen taught my son when she was brand new. Yeah.
Okay. And in item, section eleven, Classified Personnel, we also have a retirement for William Fields, Custodian Two, Thomas Edison, effective seven one sixteen, and request an appropriate resolution prepared commending him for his years of service. He's been with the district since May thirty-first, nineteen ninety-one. We must do something right when people stick around this long.
Yeah.
So if we can have a motion.
I'll make a motion we accept the retirement from, for William Fields, Custodian Two, and that appropriate resolution be prepared for him.
Do we have a second? Everybody awake?
We got, we got.
You got a second from Mr. Ali? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, our favorite thing, what policies.
Right. This brings us down to Board Policies. Back for the second reading. I was, Mr. Douglas, I hope you have the notes that I emailed you, because I left them on my desk.
I do. So it is always wonderful to have five different pair of eyes look at these policies two times, in addition to the many times that staff and cabinet have looked at them. We always find something that was missed previously. So the first item that we'd like to correct is an AR fifty-one forty-four point four.
AR?
AR fifty-one forty-four point four, subsection A, I think, or little slash A. There's a reference to parents being able to ride the bus with their students, and since we do not have a busing program.
Oh, yeah. Does that refer to, like, when we rent a bus?
No, this is on, on the way to school. Although I'm thinking, Dr. Douglas, we do have special education students ride the bus, so maybe we keep it. We keep it. Yeah, I think we should keep that. We do have a series of buses that do that. The other one is easier. There's a reference to seventh through twelfth grade.
Oh, yeah.
So we, we can just, it's, it's in section E fifty-one forty-five point six, page subsection, lowercase e, and down at the bottom it says seventh through twelfth grade. So we just want to change that to seventh through eighth grade.
To eighth grade, right? Seventh, eighth.
Okay, so. Good catch on my erroneous catch there. I'd forgotten about special ed buses. Does anybody else have any comments or corrections?
These were pretty easy. Was it all long?
These were pretty straightforward. Okay, then, just for the sake of variety, I will make the motion that we accept for the second reading, so that would be the final reading, with the one correction of changing seventh to twelve to seven to eight, our April twenty fifteen board policy revisions.
Second motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? And great. We'll be moving on to the next set.
Yeah, they're coming.
Okay. So we've reached the point, item thirteen, our Board Member Comments, Reports, and Reflection on Board Meeting Guidelines, which at this point, I think, we haven't had any meetings to report on. So we're mostly talking about reflection.
So I want to start off by, it's on the consent agenda, all the hired, the new hires for certificated personnel, but I feel the need to welcome them formally through, through this meeting, and to say thanks. And, you know, this proves we have a nationwide teacher shortage, and we hear a lot at these meetings about why people are leaving. But you just said that we must be doing something right. So we are attracting new people. And I, one of the reasons why I'm saying that is because I know one of the names on here, and I've seen this person in action, and I know that she'll be a good teacher in our district. So welcome to all the new hires. And hopefully I'll be able to make it to the, you know, back to, we don't call it back to school. What is it called?
The Welcome Day. It's actually an institute day. We're just taking the first twenty minutes to welcome.
Yeah, so I've been able to make it in the past, but there's been times I couldn't make it as well.
That would be Friday, August twelfth.
August twelfth.
And I do want, hope that somebody else from the board can make it, because I'm going to be out of town helping my mother that week.
I think I can make it.
And, oh, I reflected on, we will build upon the ideas of others and look for common ground. We will paraphrase for understanding. And like Mr. Bonilla said, we, the theme tonight seemed to be messaging, and how we're all looking for that common ground while still maintaining our uniqueness, whether it's our schools or even as board members. But we all have the same goal, which is educating our students to the best of our abilities. Thanks.
Yeah. I, I will say, I was excited too when I received the agenda and saw all of the new hires. I thought that was pretty amazing, too. It was definitely something to celebrate. So I too would like to welcome all of our new staff and teachers that will be joining us this coming year. Unfortunately, I can't make it on the twelfth, but I'm hoping one else will be able to. What time is that? Is it all, a certain specific times in the morning?
Eight, isn't it?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty?
Eight for breakfast, eight thirty for the welcome.
Fernando?
But, and I actually, I, I couldn't decide on, on what to pick, but I ended up going with, we will work toward the future, learning from the past. And I think we're continuing to learn. And as mentioned, welcoming all of these new hires is a testament of us continuing to do things differently and better, so that we can continue to bring new talent into the fold. And I love our district. I, I celebrate all of the wonderful educators that we have, administrators and staff, and our board, because I love that we, I love the cohesion that I feel amongst all of us, working together to ensure that our children continue to get the best quality education that we can. Public education, a lot of times, doesn't get, doesn't get what it deserves when we need to, to celebrate good things. There's a lot of good, great things happening here at JESD. So I'm really excited about the new school year. And thank you all.
I picked the same thing as Shaquille, that we will build upon the ideas of others and look for common ground, and we will paraphrase for understanding. So I actually have to say that with all of these things, I think we're focusing on all these things. It's good that we keep looking at it all the time, just as a good reminder. But I would like to say that I feel that our meetings are going really good, and we're, seem to be able to really get everything together. But I will have to say, I guess I better look at Facebook. Because I feel like I don't.
Just at the JESD Facebook page anymore.
Yeah.
Watch the cats.
I mean, I'm lucky I do what I'm doing. I mean, but I kind of look, because I felt like, gosh, all these things are happening, and I don't even know about it. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna look into it.
If it's any consolation, they mentioned at least two other social media things that I'm like, I haven't talked about, and I'm supposed to be trying to stay on top of this stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Ms. Brizwella, but you, you go to things, and you're actually there at the event. So some people use it as a way to not go to places and see what's going on. So you're doing fine.
Yeah, thank you. I try my best.
Try.
I'm the real in. No, and it's, you know, it's, it's really nice, because a lot of times I'll go someplace, and somebody will say, I remember you. You did this, or you came to this. And it, it really is nice when we can. I, when I first got on the board, I remember I couldn't go to everything, because I was working full-time. I couldn't leave all the time. But then later I was able to, and now I can. But I can't be everywhere, but I try to do what I can to represent the district. And I think as long as they know somebody cares that's there, it doesn't have to be all five of us.
That's right.
And we bring back and share it. But it's about letting everyone, the teachers know that we care, the students, the administrator, everybody. Because, you know, there's not one person running this district. It's everyone together. So with that, I say, it's really been a pleasure. It's really nice. I'm not saying goodbye. I'm not resigning. I'm just kidding. But it, it's really, I think that we're in a good place. I think that, you know, we feel proud about what's happening. And so let's just keep up the good work. And let's get walking shoes. All right.
I also want to echo the other members welcoming all the new teachers and staff. I, I guess they're going to be here for like thirty, forty years, if, if all the other certificates are signed in it. One of the, I picked, what did I pick? We will work towards the future, learning from the past. I know today we're talking a lot about kind of funding for our schools, as well as kind of making sure that we're communicating with teachers and our community properly. So social media is a great way just to learn on the future. And I was going to say, you, you're part of, I post you on Facebook and Twitter all the time. We've taken selfies together at, at CSBA, so we could talk about that.
Okay. Thank you. I looked at the one about bringing our best selves to the meetings, being fully present, ready to contribute and be responsible. Just as a reminder, for those of us who missed the last meeting for our various reasons, it's a long time between meetings. If you miss one of these once-a-month summer meetings, and so it was just helping to bring my head back to where I want it to be as we're getting ready for school to start, and to, to keep the, my mind on the job, even while other jobs are going on around me, too. So that's all I have to say. And I don't have any requests to address the board on closed session items. We do want to close our general meeting in, with a moment of silence in memory of Alex Pierce, grandson of Marlene Gonzalez, Instructional Assistant After School Program at Garden Village Elementary School. So if we could have a moment of silence, please. Okay. We will take a five-minute recess before we convene to close session.